Hi, I am Jessica Riley and I am the Chair of the Medfield School Committee. And about once a month, I do an update around the schools. This month, I have brought Dr. Marsden with me to do the update so that we can really talk about how the beginning of school is going, where our goals are for the year, and you know, kind of any additional news that we need to know for the next month.
Hi, I'm Jeff Marsden, I'm Superintendent of Schools. I'm glad to be here with you tonight, Jess. We had a great opening this year. We started our school year after a very difficult year that we all had last year with over, almost 2,600 students. We actually saw some growth in students this year, so we had 136 new students into the district, and we saw the largest growth in our K-1, 2 numbers where 68 students, new students came in in K-1 and 2. So it's so great to have all the kids back. We have them, we're wearing masks all day in the school, but that's kind of an easy trade-off to being in full-time and being in school every day. The state did mandate a mask mandate for us in the district, and that was set to expire on October 1st. However, just about an hour and a half ago, the Commissioner announced that he's extending that to November 1st, and there'll be more information going out to parents on that issue.
It's a nice, hopeful step, though, that it looks as though, from what we've been reading in the newspapers, and I know that we are all really anticipating this, that vaccines look as though they are just about to get approved for kids between 5 and 12, and then perhaps even below. So that seems like something that could be happening late October and through November and December, and then all of a sudden, that's a real game changer about how we've looked at school for the last 18 months.
Absolutely, and we're fortunate in Medfield. I think our numbers for adults have been really high as well, hovering around 80%, and our kids at high school level have been over 95% since the summer, so that's been really positive for us. I think that, you know, we still have some cases that are coming in. Probably, we've had, I think, eight cases so far this year, but nothing like we had last year, and certainly the vaccinations have made a huge improvement in that.
What other kinds of things are we thinking about for this school year? Because I know that there are some really exciting, non-COVID-related initiatives that are happening this year. I'm thinking about the DEI group, and that's really an important part of our future planning for the district.
It is. I think, you know, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force that we started and will be having our first meeting this week, actually, is something that we're looking at as a district that we feel it's our responsibility as a district to make sure that our kids have a deep understanding of a wide range of cultures and people, and make sure that they understand how important it is to include everyone. And I think that we put the word out last year, and we got a lot of responses from community members, from parents, from teachers, from children, and we're going to bring that group together and start having a conversation town-wide and community-wide, so we can look at some of the areas that we want to focus on. One is looking at our curriculum, to make sure that our curriculum is free of bias and is a well-rounded curriculum within the district. We want to try to diversify our workforce. We think that's a really important thing for us to do. I've been in meetings with students that say, if you could have someone that looks like me that I could go to in the district, that would be really important, and I think that's something that we feel is an important part of what we're doing as a district, is try to diversify that workforce. And I think just looking at training and workshops for both the community and for our teachers, I think that's a really important piece of the DEI Task Force as well. So that kicks off in September. We'll be meeting monthly, and we'll be providing updates at school committee meetings, and certainly getting things out to the public as well.
Right, and there's a really significant kind of educational component to this for the advisory committee itself, you know, that there's really kind of an initial, we need to all start from an understanding and a basic baseline of where we're coming from, so that we can have these discussions and really understand where our own thoughts might be, where our growth areas may need to be, and other people's perspectives. So I think I'm, I am the one, the one school committee member who's on this group, which is not a school committee group, and I'm really looking forward to it. But I also know that there are going to be times where it's hysterically funny and a lot of fun, you know, which I have always had in larger committees, you know, you always get to see the real side of people, and you also have to sit sometimes with your own discomfort and your own kind of, what I always call, aha moments, where you realize that in trying to be kind, maybe you haven't been, or in simply being the person who lives your life, you have not thought about the message that you're sending out, and these, these things happen. It's so important for us to know about them.
Yeah, I think that's a great statement. I think everyone that's involved in that committee knows that there's going to be some uncomfortability with the questions and the conversations and all that. I mean, anytime you do any period of self-examination, it's uncomfortable, right? So this is, you know, just a part of that. So I think that it's healthy, and it's a conversation that we think as a school district that our kids should be a part of too, and certainly everyone, that's a part of our community, so we're looking forward to it.
It seems that it's almost impossible to think this, but we have a strategic plan called Medfield 2021.
2021, right.
And about six years ago, we started working on that, and we put it into, we enacted it in 2017, and it is five years later, which just is astounding to me. But what's also really amazing is if I look back at our goals that we had then, and thinking about what we build and what we might put forth, I think about how much our community conversations have changed and shifted, and I also think, even though almost two years of that period of time was in this international crisis and continues to be, the, the goals and the things that we can look at and say, wow, we did that, and now we can move on, really amazing. So I'm looking forward to us really bringing those community conversations back together again, and focusing on where we want to be five years from now.
That's a great point. I think when we began this process in 2017, one of the things that we did was offer these community conversations. We had focus groups, and we had surveys, those kinds of, you know, data gathering mechanisms. It was really important to get the view of not only folks that work within the district or have kids in the district, but also our, our community. And we, we did that at the Senior Center, we did that with, with town officials, we did that with parents, former parents, and it was really important to get all that information. So I'm looking forward to that process again, to gather all that information and really start to develop our goals around what folks think are the really important things we need to look at. And it's amazing that the five years have gone by, but I think that, you know, one of the things that we're proud of is when we start to report out again on some of this information on our last strategic plan, is how much we accomplished. And certainly, COVID put a stop to some of the things that we were working on, or just, you know, we'll have to revisit them in our new strategic plan, but I think that we did a lot of really positive things, and so a lot of growth within the district in the last five years, and we're looking forward to now taking where we are now to go even further in the next five years.
Right, and I do want to say that actually, the development of the plan was before I was on the school committee, but I was part of those, some of those conversations, and seeing those conversations and then seeing the strategic plan itself, and having the privilege to kind of work within it as our goals over the last five years, those community conversations did truly move the needle and gave us a lot of information, gave the district a lot of information, that these kinds of really intense moderated discussions, you know, we will be bringing in a company that does educational visioning, and that's a pretty normal thing to do. It's not something you want to do yourself, because you can't look at yourself objectively. But those conversations really do move the needle, and, and when those opportunities come up in the spring and through, what, next fall, or please avail yourself of them, because they are rich and many of those questions are different than you think they will be.
And to your point, they, they really do drive what we do in the district. So if there's, we look at, we start to identify themes through those focus areas in the surveys, and when those themes are identified, and then we triangulate that within different groups, then it's pretty clear that it's something that's important for the town, or the community, or the parents, and something we need to work on. So it's really important to participate in that, and it helps, you know, set our direction for the next five years.
Right, absolutely, and I would say that many of the things that we heard in those meetings, or the district heard in those meetings at the time, really do, you know, have current-day implications. The way that we are choosing to really understand the new Wheelock Elm Street campus project really drove from a lot of those goals around continuity, communication, constant transition, and that those were things that were, no matter how hard we worked at them, they could not improve unless we were really able to get people all in place. So it is, it is nice to see a lot of those things kind of fruition. Then we start at year one again.
Right, so later in the spring, we'll be doing that process again, and we'll start to get the word out to involve as many people as possible in that process.
And then there's this little thing called the Wheelock Elm Street Campus, and that is coming at us very quickly. We have been working on this since...
2017.
2017 is when we got accepted into the program, and here it is 2021, with hundreds of meetings, and so much volunteer work, and thousands of man-hours, and a lot of communication, and it will finally come to a special town meeting vote on November 7th. We don't know the exact time yet, it will be announced two weeks beforehand, but I think that the town is, and the schools are very invested in making sure that everyone who wants to be able to be at town meeting will be able to be there. And then we have a ballot, regardless of whether the vote is yes or no, on November 15th, which is the Monday, so that's the usual ballot in which you have to vote at the Senior Center. And it's open from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., so 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., I imagine you'll see people out there. So we thought it was important to really kind of talk to you in a very specific way about what went into our decision-making, what we see as the facts that we know of at this point, and what are things that we don't necessarily know or can't pin down before that time. So, and I think that in some ways, we should really start back at the very beginning, because there are people who never even heard of Medfield five years ago when we started this, and are now moving to Medfield, planning to have families, buying homes. So do you want to talk a little bit about what grades these schools are, and how many children we plan to eventually put into the school, or whatever kind of flexibility over the next 50 years we may be able to have with this space?
Sure, absolutely. So interestingly enough, I did meet some of those families at Medfield Day.
Yes.
That had just moved in or are moving in the next couple of months, as I saw on our website. So there's definitely a whole group of folks that are moving into town and are excited about a new elementary school and the, and the prospect of their kids going to a brand-new building. So we started, as Jess said, we did our first statement of interest in this in 2012, then did another one in 2016, and then a third in 2017. Now, a statement of interest is something you have to send to the state, and they take a look at it, and they either accept you into the program, or they say you're not ready for the program yet. So they accepted us in 2000, this, the December of 2018, after we applied in 2017, and we're looking at building a four-to-five elementary school with 575 students, which will give us a lot of flexibility in the future. We won't have 575 students when it opens, and hopefully opens in 2024, but it will give us a lot of flexibility going forward as we see more additional students moving into the community, or additional construction that may happen in the community. So it allows us to, the flexibility to move grades if we need to, and move in grades out of Wheelock if we need to, we have a lot of students in there. So we feel pretty good about the fact that the 575 will be able to support Medfield for many, many years to come.
We are obviously a small town, and there is no cavalry. We have very, you know, we don't have a lot of commercial tax rate, or commercial tax base, so we understand, and I think that, that our, the important part is to think for the long run, and really make sure that over time, we're doing the best that we possibly can. And that was one of the things that went into my decision-making as a school committee member, and I think went with all of ours. We're all residents, and we really do think about the stewardship of the town. But our decision-making was on the educational plan, which I think it addresses so many of the issues we have heard from our strategic plan, from families over the years, from people who love the idea of having every kid in town go to school following each other, but also knowing that we lose continuity, we lose a sense of community, and we lose a sense of being able to hold a family of kids for four straight years throughout their elementary school, and that nothing gets lost in between, because we have amazing teachers at all of our schools, and I can personally attest how hard they work to communicate between schools. But unless you are able to be in the same space, or in very close proximity to each other, having those informal conversations, having those like, you know, oh, I saw that, I saw his brother, I saw her sister, you know, and knowing each family in that same intense way, you lose a lot. So I think that that was one of the things that we really considered in terms of thinking about, how do we think about the town as a whole, and how do we use our space most efficiently? And, I mean, do you have anything else you want to kind of add to that?
Yeah, I mean, so your point about the education plan is really important. So one of the things that we had to do as part of this process is develop an education plan that we submit to the state. And it's actually a really great process. We involved the teachers, and we got parents, and community members, and town officials involved into kind of a brainstorming session and see what was really important. And we actually did two, if you remember.
Oh, I remember.
So we did, we did one education plan for a four, five building, and one education plan for a three, four, or five buildings. At the time, we're looking at kind of long-term, what would be the best solution, and we probably agree that the three, four, or five, at some level, might be the best solution, but it was very, very expensive, and we know that the town could not...
It was expensive, and it was August of last year.
It could not afford that, so we feel like that was, the four, or five is the best fit for the community right now. But that plan, when we got approval at the Board, at the MSBA Board, was really, I mean, it was a lot of work that we all did in that, and MSBA said it really should be the model plan for any, any town or district that's looking to build an elementary school. So we felt really good about that feedback, because we worked hard on it, got a lot of information from the community, from teachers, from administrators, from staff, and put that together. And the neat part about it is, is the architects take that education plan, and then they develop the school based on that plan. So they don't come in and say, we have this building in mind, let's try to fit the educational plan in it. They take our educational plan, design the building around it, which, as you can see from the, all the designs that are on our website, they did a phenomenal job with that. So we're excited about the fact that we were able to develop that plan, take the time to do all that, and the architects listened to us and built it, and designed the building based on that plan.
I also find that while I'm not on the school building committee, I have, I attend many meetings, and I've clearly been updated throughout time, and now I'm starting to get more and more involved, because when this passes, I will be the guy who signs it. So, you know, I've been involved, and we're getting, it's getting to the point where, you know, 70 years from now, somebody will see my name, and...
Right.
I feel a real sense of responsibility around that, even more than I could have even before. But one of the things that we've really liked about the architects that we work with is they're one of the, they're a firm that has a really very well-known educational consultant, who I honestly felt, in some ways, as much as I've been up to my knees in this for years, I learned more about school design and pedagogy, and where we are thinking to the future in the two hours I spent with David, than the bits and pieces that fly at me over the last couple of years. And then when I was able to see that vision realized at the elementary school that they just built in Harvard, Mass., which was also designed by Arrow Street, and as I'm walking through the building, I, I was envisioning, how do I bring buses full of people up here, and who do I get to allow me to do that? Because once you see what, what all of these kind of like educational terms actually mean, like breakout rooms, and all of a sudden, you realize that a breakout room isn't like a room that you go off to on the side. It is the ability to bring kids from two separate classes who have the same level of need, and either need for additional support, or need for additional enrichment, right? You're clearly able to use your resources in a much better way, and then it doesn't become just a complete break from the class, right?
Right.
You're close, but you're isolated enough with a teacher that they can teach, and then you go back, and it's so much more fluid. And so many of the kind of learning and exploratory parts of the building, I really started to understand what they were talking about when they said, building is teacher, that the building itself is made to teach the students as well, really, and it's, it was an amazing experience. If you can get to a new elementary school anytime soon, you will see how very different our buildings are now. Great people, but...
That visit was, was really important for us, because, you know, we've been looking at it on paper, and then looking at it through a computer-generated models, but to actually be in the building and see the construction, and see what we've been talking about and discussing, it made a world of difference for all of us. So I think that was...
Absolutely.
A critical few hours we spent that Friday afternoon to make that visit up there.
That's absolutely true.
And your point about the breakout spaces, like, that's really critical for us as we continue to expand on our, on our project-based learning, and we're doing a lot more of that within the classrooms, but right now, we're kind of stuck in an 800-square-foot classroom, and we can't do a lot of that. The new design, and the reason why they designed it is because we were really, we thought that was an important piece. The breakout rooms are either, the spaces are either right outside the classroom, which allows two, two classrooms to share a space, or separate breakout rooms that allow, as you said, teachers to take a couple of kids from each room to do some individualized work and instruction on that. So that, those are spaces we don't have now, and, you know, they've been in education for a while now, and we've been trying to make do with, you know, going in the hallways, or essentially, the existing Dale Street, using closets to do some of that work.
That is true.
This allows us to really have that, which is, it's something our kids and our teachers deserve. So I think it's really important for us to move in that direction and make sure that we have a beautiful facility for them to use and do that.
And to kind of hinge on to one of the other reasons that really thought about the Elm Street and Wheelock campus being kind of the, the best option when we thought about it long-term, is that, you know, Wheelock itself is a great school, full of caring people, but it is also 50 years old at this point, and many of the kind of more modern amenities, comforts, facilities can be shared across a longer period of time. It can, you know, the, the advantages of our new elementary school can benefit twice as many kids for twice as long than if we were to simply have sited it in the center of town and kind of continued with our same model. And that seems so important to me. Again, this is a resource-saving issue. We need, we need to use our resources in a way that is, that are smart, and smart in the long run, not just in the short run, and to be able to really use that flexibility of space in a short sidewalk between the two schools, a short drop-off for buses, that is one, and not two stops.
Right, so we eliminate that one stop.
Easy, right.
So right now, if you don't know...
Completely separated parent drop-off area.
Right, if you don't know right now, that we, our elementary buses pick up all of our students, and then they stop at Memorial, stop at Dale, and stop at Wheelock. So this would eliminate one whole stop where we'd still pick up all the students, and again, it's the same number of kids, because they're going, they're just going from one place to the other.
Going from one place to another, yeah.
And they would pull into the existing Wheelock location, open the door, kids would go to the right if they were going to Wheelock, and they'd go to the left if they were going to the new elementary school. It's just the efficiency there for not only our busing, but also for parents that have to drop off and be at two places at once, which we hear a lot about now, where they go from one side of town to the other. Well, this will allow you to drop off your children at one site. There's so many advantages of having a campus where you have grades two through five there, and that's the key, right? You can't say, well, how come you can't have grades, you know, K-1, 2, and then 4? Well, there's, there's not a lot going on between those grades, but if you have successful grades of, of grades two through five, there's a lot of collaboration that goes on there, there's a lot of sharing of facilities you can do there. As I said at a different meeting, but both Steve and I were in another district that had a campus model like that for elementary schools, and it was seamless. The kids would go back and forth, and they would, whether it was for the gymnasium, or for the cafeteria, or for arts and music, they would go back and forth a lot, and it provided kids that may be in an older building, the use of the really nice amenities that are in the new building. So it worked really well. It's not a theory, because we've seen it work well in person, in our, in our own professional job, so I think it's, it's, it makes a lot of sense to do that campus model.
I also understand, however, that, and we have been very aware, that there are real concerns around money and budget, and how this is going to impact your personal home. If you are a taxpayer in Medfield and you have, you know, your property taxes, you want to know what that hit's going to be. And we have some very good ideas around what that will be, and in fact, as we are able to get closer to the vote itself, you should be able to see kind of really exactly what the impact should be, like maybe the, the first year, and then sliding down, what kind of debt's going to roll off the books that we already have, that are, that is quite close to coming off. And Dr. Marsden, I know that there's this really interesting, essentially, widget that will be on the website at some point.
It'll be on the website very soon, so essentially, you'll be able to put on what your home value is, and it will calculate what the impact is going to be for you.
Right, specific to Medfield, so your home value as done by the assessors...
Right.
At the whatever percentage that the assessors value that.
And it will tell you exactly what the impact's going to be.
Right.
So there's, I know we had, there was something out on Medfield Day that the school building committee was handing out. We had a couple of different scenarios. So scenario one was a 30-year bond with the average household assessed value in Medfield at $692,000, would see an $852 increase in year one, tapering to 520 in year, in year 30, and then this offset is, offset by a $117 decrease in the first couple of years as debt rolls off on the town side. So the first scenario was a 30-year bond, and the second scenario was a 20-year bond, so the average household, again, is 692,000, and we'd see a $1,030 increase in year one, and then it would taper down to 776 in year 30, and then again, offset by the $117 decrease due to debt rolling off next couple of years. So the town's got to make a decision whether they're going to look for a 30- or a 20-year bond, but I think that gives you a ballpark, depending on where you live and what your house is, what the impact is going to be for you from this project. And as I said, that will be on our website, www medfield.net. You go on Explore, you click on Explore on the top of the page, and it will say, New Elementary School. You click on that, and all the information you want regarding this project over the years is there for you to see, whether it's committee meeting minutes, committee meeting agendas, designs, everything is all there, or any presentations we've had at our community forums, but we will be adding that widget very soon, so you'll be able to plug that information in and find out what the impact is for you and your household.
We want you to know what your options are, and, but we also, I think I would emphasize as a, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, and as a school committee member, that there is a very good possibility that if this does not pass, which we, the school would need two-thirds majority to pass at town meeting, and that can be remarkably difficult to get. We've seen, you know, I think historically, our high has been about 1,000 people at town meeting, which means that truly only, what, 333 people, 334, would need to vote no. And then we would be back to the very beginning. It's scary in that, because we know how much we need it, but the other frightening part is the finances of that. And I think that there is a real concern that knowing how much building costs are going up, and some of what the SBC is far more expert in than I, but one of the figures that I heard at the open meeting, Community Forum on Wednesday, is the expectation is the building costs could go up by 10% next year. And all of a sudden, you start looking at compounding that 10%, and even if it goes down to 5% the year after, and 5%, which is the kind of normative growth, even five years from now, this becomes a very difficult project for our town to manage, even if right now, it seems expensive and there is sticker shock. But this is, I feel as though we are so lucky to be able to have the professionals that we do on the school building committee, because I am able to watch these folks who are in school construction, municipal construction, go through and truly dig out what is unnecessary, what might be something that we could get rid of if we needed to, to bring it back in, but to make sure that none of the programming is getting lost. That's been a real eye-opener, too.
We're extremely fortunate in this community to have the school building committee that we have. As Jess said, they're, they're in the school construction business, we have architects, we have electrical engineers, we have a plethora of people that are just so equipped in doing this work, and it's, it's very unlike many school building committees where you might have one or two folks on there. Our whole committee is loaded with people that, that do this for a living. So we're fortunate, they know, you know, what the important things are to have in a school building, they know how the project and how construction business works, and they've been very, very helpful with us, as they have with other projects they've done in town. It's mostly the members of the permanent building committee, led by Chair Mike Quinlan, so it's been great.
Yeah.
But we're fortunate to have that in this community.
One of the concerns I've heard is, and it's... One of the concerns I've heard is, and it's absolutely legitimate, is what's going to happen to the Dale Street building? And a lot of people are very concerned about its renovation costs if we were to keep it as a school building. A lot of people have seen costs that were put out through kind of a capital planning memo study that was done several years ago. And a lot of people are like, it's going to cost so much to mothball that. We don't want to see it mothballed. So I can tell you officially, you know, there is a process in a town that's in the Mass General laws that talks about how a school district transfers a, transfers a building to a town. And it's a negotiation and everything else, and we basically decertify it and then for education. And then the town votes to take it over, again, one of those two-thirds votes at town meeting. However, that will not happen until such a time that there are no students in Dale, right? That is when that vote, that decision, we will obviously be thinking about that as the global part of this entire project and what we think of, when we think about the town-wide master plan that has just been put into place, the hospital master plan, all of these things. So we will be having those conversations. Many of the ideas that were raised at the warrant committee meeting on Thursday, the twenty-third, September twenty-third, and it's on video as well, really kind of opened my eyes in a way that I think I had always known this. But I think that unless you're in kind of the municipality and you don't understand how badly this town needs space. And if there is an actual building that can accommodate some of the programming that some of the people were talking about at the public meeting, for instance, Parks and Rec, and how they could have programming that doesn't necessarily stop for kids at eight or nine, but continue through teenage years, adults, families, seniors, multi-generational.
Which I think that was a part of the master plan, right? That teenagers wanted a place to go.
They need a place to go, and that doesn't cost them money necessarily to go in the same way that trying to do a, you know, when you're a teenager, you need to be able to do something that's not scheduled. And we spend so much time scheduling kids because there's no place for them to go here. Talking to Medfield Outreach, they have space at the high school. They work very, very smoothly with the high school. But they are Medfield Outreach. Over the last thirty years, their mission has really changed from being just kids under eighteen to a wide range of town services that they offer. And to be able to have kind of a satellite where they could offer their clinical services, office services, they are ready to bring more clinicians, interns in. They don't have the space, right? There are many other kind of small incremental people who, and committees that need that. So I don't think that that building and its remaining lifetime would ever be wasted. That's my personal opinion, and that's something that we have not yet discussed as a committee, but will be on the agenda very soon. The third concern I've heard people bring up the most right now is the environment. I am somebody who, I love open space. I love the fact that I can be in Medfield and in the woods in literally thirty seconds from my house and hike for three hours. That is such a unique privilege. I do not know of anyone I have ever spoken of in town who thinks, but I think we can just throw that, we can just throw that away. We can throw away our principles on water, on the environment, just so we can build this school where we think it would be best. That is absolutely not how I hear any person that I've ever spoken to talk about it. And whether that were the truth or not, school, school building projects are held to the same standards as any other large building project would be for D E P regulations, for environmental regulations, for mitigation of stormwater runoff, for impermeable surfaces. And, and that is a whole level of science that I do not know, but there are experts in the field and all of whom will be consulting and put the full force of the D E P behind, behind the project, because that is just the law of the land. There's no, we cannot shortcut that in any way, shape, or form. And in fact, the improvements that happen at the Wheelock School currently in terms of changing how the driveway and the traffic flow goes, a lot of that is kind of, has been deferred over time. Those parking lots, those impermeable surfaces then also end up being held to the same standards that the D E P will hold in two thousand, in two thousand twenty-four when we open this school. So it's, there's no grandfathering in, there's no kind of exceptions around that. And in fact, I wouldn't want there to be. I drink the same water, and as a town, we just funded a water treatment plant to make sure that we can use the wells that are, you know, within that same side of town more frequently and manage our water better. So it would be counterintuitive for us to not be as careful with our natural resources as possible. And it's also our children, you know, kids really value this open space. And if they found one thing for the pandemic, learning outside just opens their world in a different way. It sets their bodies in a different way. And it's, it's been one really good part of this whole mess. Feel free to call it a mess.
So the October community forum, as you know, we've had forums every single month, just going over different topics. The one we just did last week was on tax impact and budget costs. We're going to look at doing one for water in October, so that all these topics will be discussed, and we'll have open conversation around that like we've had at all of our community forums. So we're looking forward to that. I mean, I think I realize that there's a lot of information out there, and it can get confusing for folks. And I just want to reiterate the fact that all the information that we have from the project, the official project information is all on W W W dot Medfield dot net. Click on Explore on the top, and then click on New Elementary School, and all the information is there. And I will add too that our warrant committee has been doing kind of a third-party independent review of all of this stuff.
Currently calling them Switzerland, the Switzerland Warrant Committee.
They have done a lot, and they've met with everyone on all of this, and I think they're meeting still coming up. They also have launched a website, which is off the town website, that has all this information on as well. So if you don't want to see what the S B C has put on there, you can go on the warrant committee on the town website, and they're putting all their information up there as well, and they'll have that completed before town meeting in November.
So again, just to close, town meeting is in November. It's November seventh for the special town meeting. That is the one where you have to sign, show up at a specific time, and the town will post that about two weeks beforehand. We're really looking to weather and also the pandemic and see kind of where our viral spread is right now as to whether it'll be outside or inside. And that has to pass special town meeting with a yes on the warrant article by two-thirds. And then the, and that is essentially to appropriate an amount of money. The second vote is a ballot vote, an electoral vote, like we do every other election, at the senior center. And that is on Monday, November fifteenth, open regular hours, six A M. to eight P M. And that needs to pass with fifty percent plus one. And that is to actually then authorize the town to take out the bond. So it's a two-part process. We've done it before. Someday we will do it again. But I do respect that this is the, this is the biggest step we've had to take for education in our town in fifty years. As I was looking up how we give a school back to the town, I realized that we had not decommissioned a school in Medfield since the FAFF Center. And I don't even know what that process was like then because that was eighty years ago. So, so I think the future has finally hit us, and it's time. We need to get this done. We need to get this done for all of our kids, and we need to get this done now for our town. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Everyone who's listening.
Appreciate it. Thank you.